Yeah, all right.
All right, then I will call the March 11th Regular Planning Commission meeting to order. And I would like to ask everybody to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Ms. O'Brien, that brings us to roll call. Make sure your microphones are unneeded, commissioners.
Chair Namath?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Fagasane?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson? Oh, he's showing and he's here.
I see that he's here.
I'm here.
Okay.
You wouldn't turn off.
And Commissioner Smith?
I'm here.
All right, wonderful. So good to see everybody this evening. Item four on our agenda is the review of our agenda. Ms. Paxton?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Planning Commission. The items 8A and 8C, we would like to be continued to date uncertain to allow staff to work through some of the language to better massage it for those zoning ordinances.
All right, thank you very much. May I please get a motion to continue item 8A to a date uncertain? Make the motion.
Promoted.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Avery.
Correct.
Okay. All right, and if we could please have a voice vote for that, Ms. O'Brien?
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fagasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The motion carries. Item 8A will be continued to a date uncertain. And could I please get a motion to continue item 8C to a date uncertain?
So moved. So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Smith.
I'll second it.
I have a second from Commissioner Fagasane. If I could please get a voice vote call?
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fagasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. Item 8C is continued to a date uncertain. That brings us to item five on our agenda. May I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
So moved. Second.
I have a mo- a motion from Commissioner Smith and a second from Commissioner Henderson. And may we please get a roll call vote on that?
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fagasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. The motion passes. At this time, this brings us to item six on our agenda. And this is for public comments on our consent calendar. And our consent calendar consists of approving the minutes from last month's meeting. And it's also a time for public comment for any item that is not on the agenda. If you are speaking on a particular item on the agenda, there will be a public comment time for that item. So are there any people here to speak on our consent calendar or on any un-agendized items?
We have no raised hands on the line, Chair Namath.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Then we will move on to our consent calendar. May I please get a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Promoted. Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson, a second from Commissioner Smith. And may I please get a voice vote on that, Ms. O'Brien?
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fagasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much. That will bring us to item 8B on our agenda.
Mr. Justin Sauter will give a brief presentation as this item, just a reminder, is the Planning Commission in the public. This item was continued from the February meeting and the public hearing was left open.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so we have tentative tract map 81337. The project is a proposal for an 86 lot subdivision for the purpose of constructing single-family homes. The project was continued from the February 11th Planning Commission meeting to allow staff sufficient time to provide clarifying information within the transportation section of the initial study. During the February 11th Planning Commission meeting, several comments were received from residents with concerns regarding the obstruction of views and privacy, the loss of existing open space, and impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. Since the February 11th meeting, the applicant has agreed to lower the pad heights for the homes along the southern boundary of the project site in an effort to help preserve the view the residents are already accustomed to. As you may recall, staff received a written letter from the resident with additional concerns. Staff has responded with a formal letter to address their concerns, which has been provided to you for your review. The Planning Commission has three options tonight. Option one is to adopt the resolution approving tract map 81337, the MND, and the MMRP. Option two is to continue the project. Option three is to deny the project. Option one D is recommended, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. So prior to the meeting, all of the commissioners have received an email. If you can please confirm, there were some public comment, e-comment. There was the city's response to last month's letter. And then there were some letters and other comments. So did you all receive those? Have a chance, I see.
Received.
Wonderful. Okay, then at this time, we will continue with the public hearing. And I would just like to remind any members of the public that are here to speak that you do have three minutes. And it will not be a dialogue. If you have questions, I will write them down. We will make sure to do our best to get them answered in our commissioner discussion of the item. So if we have members of the public here to comment?
We do, Chair Namath. Kelly Reed, I will now activate your microphone. Give me one second.
Hello?
Hi, Kelly, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I did see that they are trying to address the concerns that we raised with regards to our views being obstructed. However, I am not certain because the picture came up and went down so quickly where, what boundary that is. Is that the one near M? Or up? I, I, I'm not certain what boundary he was talking about. And my other concern is that I didn't hear anything with regards to the health risk. I have a severe medical condition and with very, very low immunity. So I am very concerned about the dust and debris because our backyard, the wall, is right there to where they were going to build. And the idea of having construction debris in the air, I, I believe will put me in a hospital. So I did not see anything that addressed that. And when I read the information, it just said that there would not be a significant impact. And I don't know what they consider significant, but my health, to me, is significant. So even if one person lost their life over a health concern because of that, I think it's significant. So I don't know where they get the idea that they could say they've mitigated it to where it would be an insignificant impact. And I would like to understand that and what they would do about it if that did happen.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Reed.
There are no longer any hands raised, Chair Namath.
Okay. Thank you very much. And is our applicant with us this evening?
Yes, I am here.
Hi, Chris.
Good evening. So good evening, planning commissioners, staff, and residents that are joining us via Zoom. Again, my name is Chris Penaro, and I am a project manager for Rural Investors Group. And I've been with Rural Investors for over six years. And I mainly focus my job in the Antelope Valley, and that is entitling projects. Just a little background, I'm a mother of three. My oldest is currently at Fort Hood in Texas. I'm very proud of him, serving the military right now. He'll be soon deploying to Kuwait. So again, that's kind of my background. Although I'm not a resident of Palmdale, I have lived in nearby candy country for over 18 years. So I'm very excited tonight to bring this project before you. Planning Commissioners, you may recognize me. Over the years, we have quite a few tentative map extensions that I've been to the hearings. And we are continuing to be hopeful that this market will be continuing to pick up with our builders and, and continue forward and, and go from there. So this project tonight will in fact be, provide a piece of this missing puzzle in this community. It'll extend roadways where barriers are today, connect multipurpose trail along Semina Street West. It creates new neighbors to shop at local businesses and provide desperately needed homes for the city of Palmdale. So our application was submitted in 2018. Our civil engineer, Daryl Witten, from Cornerstone is here tonight to answer any questions you might have regarding the tentative map. In addition, our track was required to have extensive analysis and technical studies be compared. And in fact, we had additional habitat assessment that was prepared to ensure that the site was properly evaluated. And our biologist is here tonight as well. She's with Michael Baker International, Sheila Riggs. And again, if you have any questions, she's available to, to respond. So just real quickly, the project is zoned R113,000 lots. We are in fact zoning compliant. The project also fully meets the city's general plan land use objective of SFR2. Again, we are fully compliant. Real quickly, under CECL, we were required to prepare initial study. The initial study is to determine whether or not the project would have any potential impact. And as a result, the conditions of approval and mitigation measures were prepared. And we will ensure that the requirements must and will be met as the home builder in the future comes on board. The consultant who prepared the initial study is also here tonight. Peter Miniger has a extensive background. He's with Michael Baker International. And again, he is here to answer any questions you might have. As you're aware, due to COVID restrictions, it was not possible for us to meet with residents in, you know, in-person meetings like we do in the past. However, we did provide some community outreach. We sent letters to residents and businesses. And we have provided you with letters of support for our project tonight rather than request our supporters attend the meeting. So commissioners, what I ask tonight is of critical importance. And that is that this project has met all of the city's criteria and is consistent with the general plan. And so therefore, we would respectfully request approval tonight. And in conclusion, I just would like to thank your staff. They're amazing. Their professionalism and their diligence throughout this process is amazing. And again, just thank you very much for, for helping us through this process.
Thank you very much, Ms. Penaro, and thank your son for his service. My daughter's currently over in that general area right now with the Air Force, so.
Oh, wow, yeah. Hope she stays safe.
All right. Do commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, I would like to hear from, I would like to address Ms. Reed's concerns. If we could, I'm not sure if Justin will be able to answer. He can probably show his map back up there. But where the pad changes were so that Ms. Reed can get it up?
Yeah, so all of the pads on the southern boundary of the project site. So not the ones towards M. That would be the north side, the south side. All of those pad heights have been lowered since the, the previous planning commission meeting.
And that was on the, on the grading map that we received?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Can you pop your map up there and show that for me? Is that possible?
A second.
Sorry to put you on the spot like that.
Oh, you're good. Let's see. So it would be right here along the southern boundary. And then I can pull up the actual, so these lots here have all been lowered.
Okay.
So N is up here. And here's where they would be lowered.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then Ms. Penaro, I am not sure which of your team there would be best to help answer what mitigation efforts are being put into place in Ms. Reed's concern about dust and things blowing and being disruptive during construction.
It was, well, it was analyzed during the initial study. And there's also conditions of approval that we have to meet regarding dust control and, and construction debris and those items. So Peter, if you could hop on this question, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Peter Miniger. I was the environmental consultant for the initial study. So Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District sets standards for construction and operational emissions. And so through the air quality analysis, we looked at a list of construction emissions that could be generated by the site. And they were all under the Antelope Valley thresholds without mitigation due to the, the small scale of the site and limited construction activity. So aside from the, the standard construction conditions that would be required for the project, there was no additional mitigation required.
Okay, thank you very much, Peter. All right. Are there any questions for the applicant? And no other people here to speak? So I am going to close the public hearing if there's.
Really quickly, Chair Namath, there are two raised hands.
Oh, okay, wonderful.
Mark Reed, I will activate your microphone. One second.
Hey, hello.
Hi, Mark, welcome.
Hi, I'm the husband of Kelly. We are on the north side of where this is planned to be built. And just over the fence, there appears to be a drainage ditch there. So my question has to do with how far away from that drainage ditch do you plan to actually build a structure? My understanding is that it's not going to be a street there. So the home will, will back up against ours. But are you taking the drainage ditch out? How will that work?
Thank you, Mark, very much. Do we have another caller with a raised hand?
They lowered their hand, so that's, there's no more callers raised hands.
All right, then at this point, I will close the public hearing on this item. And if we could get into our commissioner discussion on this item? And I guess I'd like to start off with whoever out there best could answer Ms. Reed's question on the drainage ditch on the north side.
I can, I can answer that. This is, this is Daryl Witten. I'm the civil engineer on the project.
Hi, Daryl.
So the, there's a, there's an existing block wall along the north boundary of the project. And the homes on the north side back up to the project. The, the developer of that project put a, a concrete lined swale along the south edge of the wall to divert stormwater because the entire site slopes downhill towards the north. And so the developer had to put something in place to receive the stormwater off the existing undeveloped site. When we develop the site, there will be a home in place of that. Well, we, we will have homes that back up to that existing block wall. So the, the concrete ditch is going to go away because the water on our project site is going to be conveyed through streets, gutters, and, and stormwater system into the adjoining sum. So the concrete ditches are no longer going to be needed. The homes along that line are on very large lots. They're 13,000 square feet. And the, the city standards for setbacks will, will probably push the home. I mean, these are big lots. They're probably going to be deep enough for pools and backyard, that sort of thing. So the homes are probably going to be a good 40 feet away from the block wall. So, and again, the drainage ditch won't have to be there anymore because the site will be developed.
Thank you very much. That clarifies that. All right, is there any commissioner discussion on this item? If there is no discussion, may I get a motion on this item, please? Can I make a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll second that. Option one for 8B.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Fagasane and a second from Commissioner Henderson. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, then Ms. O'Brien could be.
Yes. I did, can I just say one, one, one discussion?
Yeah.
I want to first thank the residents for adding their concerns and bringing it to our attention. I have actually read the report and, and I do hear and see and, and recognize the concerns that they've raised, those who are in opposition to this project. And, and I'm glad the investors, the royalty started to at least address some of the concerns that you raised from our previous meetings. And unfortunately, may not be able to address everything. We may not have been satisfied with everything. But I, I, it looks like they made an effort to try to make this happen. And because there is an issue of housing shortage in our community, and this does seem to be in alignment with the general plan for Palmdale, I, I certainly understand why there are those who support it and those who oppose it. But I want to thank everybody who actually, you know, took interest in this and, and sent their email to us and sent a comment to us. I want you to know we did review it and we did read it, and we definitely heard your voice. So I appreciate you participating in this process. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Smith. All right, so we have a motion and a second. And if there are no other commissioner comments on the motion, Ms. O'Brien, can we please call for the question?
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fagasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much, everybody, for participating in that. That will now bring us to item nine, our presentation on the general plan update.
Yes, as all of our planning commissioners know, we are right in the middle of our general plan update. Actually, I believe a year and a half in, almost literally, or maybe two years, I don't know. Anyway, we're very well into this. So we were in front of the planning commission last November. And, or maybe December. Man, I'm getting all my days from end of last year. And we're back in front of you with the edited, revised, publicly engaged, preferred land use alternative. So we have our consultant here, Simran Malhotra, from Ramian Associates to give you a presentation. There'll be stopping points that are natural and question stops. But if you have any questions throughout the presentation, please feel free to engage. This is really about getting all of your feedback. And we look forward to hearing from you. So Simran, with that, thank you. Simran, we cannot hear you.
There we go. Sorry about that. I had a double mute going. Oh, good evening, Chair Namath and members of the planning commission. My name is Simran Malhotra, and I'm a principal with Ramian Associates. And I'm really excited to be here today to give you an update on where we are with the Palmdale general plan update. As you know, this is an effort that has been undertaken by the city after, and it's been 25 years plus since the last time the city comprehensively updated their general plan. So over the last two years, we have undergone a lot of engagement. And we are at the point now where we are ready to present. Um and uh we are at the point now where we are, are ready to present the preferred land use plan um to you all for your feedback and input. And then we'll be taking it to council next week. So very briefly, uh I'll give you an update on the progress we have made since the last time we met with you uh and that was September. Um and then we, I'll walk you through the preferred alternative, uh describe some of the feedback we have received. And then also go over some of the refinements the general plan team is proposing as a result of that feedback. And then as Cardine mentioned, feel free to interrupt me uh at any time with any questions. Uh and I will also pause at certain points to answer those um as they come up. So overall, we are on uh step four of a six-phase process. Uh and we started about two years ago. Uh and the first two steps focused on uh learning about the city and.
Simran, sorry to interrupt, can you share your screen?
You, I'm so sorry, I thought I did.
I thought it was just me and then I realized, thank you.
So um actually, okay, so um so I apologize for that. Um as I said, we were on a, on step four of a six-phase uh process. Uh and uh we started about two years ago. Um we started with learning about the city and identifying issues and opportunities and then created a vision and guiding principles. Uh the next phase, which started last summer, was uh describing the alternatives uh or preparing alternatives and get, for land use and then getting feedback on those. That feedback then led to the preferred alternative, which was reviewed with the, by the uh G-PAC and with the community over the last couple of months. Uh we've also been working with the G-PAC, um which is the General Plan Advisory Committee, to develop policies that are needed to implement the, the desired plan. And after the land use map is finalized, uh we'll begin preparation of the technical studies needed uh along with preparation of the general plan document itself. Uh the last phase uh will be the review by the public and various decision makers for adoption. And throughout this entire process, we provided multiple ways um for the communities to provide their input. And um and as I noted, we have been working with the G-PAC uh con- consistently to get their feedback as well. Um some of those, the G-PAC members um are in, in the audience. Um the next few slides provide some additional background context for the development of the alternative. Um based on what we heard from the community and the direction from you and the city council, the general plan team prepared uh vision themes and guiding principles. And these provide uh frameworks to guide future decision-making. Uh these ten themes are uh broad and deal with all facets of life in Palmdale. Um these will guide the, these guided the development of the alternatives and now the preferred uh alternative. And uh will continue to guide the goals and policies that are included in the, in the general plan. Um during the analysis, we also considered which areas of the city should be uh preserved or remain as is and where growth could grow. Um and then we also considered other constraints such as availability of infrastructure to locate where these areas of change um should be. And uh the three alternatives that were prepared are focused on those areas of change. Uh they varied in different ways. Uh primarily, uh the major differences were where medical and educational districts were proposed, what the distribution and mix of employment uses were, um the density of new housing and the amount of regional commercial. Um and we conducted extensive engagement uh about these. We had focus groups, virtual workshop, a survey, pop-up events, uh and uh meetings with you and the city council. Uh we received over eight hundred responses uh and including in about four thousand individual touchpoints. Um based on that feedback, uh alternative three was uh generally selected for a variety of reasons, including um the mix of jobs, the choices that are offered for housing and um, and uh flexibility and uh reduction in the need for travel um and lower vehicle miles uh traveled. Uh other aspects of the two other alternatives were liked as well and those were incorporated in the development of the preferred plan. Um for the general plan map, we have refined the land use designations for various uh kinds of land uses in Palmdale. And these cover uh the spectrum of the kinds of development we envision seeing in Palmdale in the future. And some of these are already in the current general plan and some are new designations that will allow for uh different types of development to, to be, uh to occur. Start with residential, um the uh on the screen, those with the gray background are existing um general plan uh designations. And then tho- those that are in with the white background here are, are new designations. Uh four residential designations, there are a total of nine and seven of these are carried over from the nineteen ninety-three general plan. The two new uh designations address missing middle density ranges in the city. And these allow for housing types that such as townhomes, two-to-three story, walk-ups, courtyard style, um uh mu- residential buildings and mid-drive podium multifamily. Um we also included four new mixed-use designations. These, um there aren't any in the city uh today. And these are, these allow for a mix of commercial and residential uses. Uh and these have the flexibility of whether, whether they are integrated vertically in a building, vertical mixed-use, or if they are located side by side um in a horizontal mixed-use format. Um the four uh den- uh designations have a range of densities associated with them from less intense to more intense. Um there are also six um commercial uh and employment and industrial designations. And these allow a range of uses at a variety of scales. Uh the neighborhood commercial and regional commercial uh designation supports commercial uses at the neighborhood and regional scales respectively. The visitor commercial designation supports retail, entertainment, and hotels to serve the needs of visitors and highway traffic. Um the employment flex uh designation covers uh job-producing uses including officers, medical, research and development, and uh light industrial uses. And then industrial and um aerospace industrial um continue uh as per the existing general plan. Um the educational flex district uh is intended to support development of educational uses including higher education, vocational training, and satellite campuses. Um this will also allow supportive retail office and some limited housing. Uh the health and wellness district is uh a designation that allows uses that are supportive of health and wellness in the, in Palmdale. Uh and this would allow uses including medical facilities, offices, and supportive R and D uses as well as some ancillary retail. And there are four public uh designations which include um schools, parks, um public and civic facilities, and open space uses. And then finally, the specific plan designation covers um existing specific, existing adopted specific plans in, within the city. And the specific plan documents um themselves provide more detail on what's allowed, um what, what are the densities that are permitted as well as other development regulations. I'll pause here for any questions. I know that was a lot of information. Keep going. Uh and now I'll walk you through the preferred plan. Um the land use framework here um covers the entire city and it illustrates the major components, including where village centers uh and multi-use centers might be located. It also locates where downtown should be, um which as you can see here is in the central portion around the transit area specific plan uh location uh near the high-speed rail station, uh the fourteen freeway um technology and just south of Palmdale uh Boulevard. Uh it shows two health and wellness districts, one around the Palmdale Regional Medical Center and the second one on Avenue S. Um and then um regional commercial uses around uh Danilo Valley Mall and a variety of employment uses around Plant Forty-two. Uh in a little bit more detail here, um this composite map uh shows the preferred alternative, shows the areas that are, are changing as well as those aren't changing and what the uh recommended designations are. Um so again, uh the location of downtown uh around the transit station and high-speed rail station is now adopted as the transit area specific plan. Uh two health and wellness districts, uh one around the regional medical center and the second next to Ca- the Kaiser Permanent Facility on Avenue S and uh Forty-seven. Um two education districts on Palmdale Boulevard, uh one on Twenty-Fifth and the second on around Thirty-Fifth Street. Uh the regional commercial uses at A V Mall. Uh employment uses around um Plant Forty-two. This includes a mix of aerospace industrial designation as well as industrial designation. Um Palmdale Boulevard will continue to be a mixed-use corridor with mixed residential uses on both sides uh between Avenue Q and Avenue R. Um and then um we expect to see village centers ac- across the city and I'll talk a little bit more about these later on in the presentation. Um this ma- slide shows the difference in uh land area allocated for different uh types of land uses. And the changes, uh change in area is not that different. But what's really different is the pattern and the intensity of land uses. And this difference has different implications and results in the metrics that we look at which are on this slide. Um this compares the preferred alternative to the nineteen ninety-three general plan. And both the number of housing units is higher and um housing units and jobs is higher in the preferred alternative as compared to the nineteen ninety-three general plan. These are built-out numbers. Uh the new land use alternative though reduces V M T as it encourages um residents to walk and bike more compared to the land use patterns today. And as a result, it also reduces the annual household cost for transportation, energy, and uh, and water. I'll pause here for any questions. Now I'd like to dive in a little bit more detail on some of the elements of the preferred land use alternative, starting with the village centers and the multi-use nodes. Um village centers um create a place for residents in the surrounding neighbors, neighborhoods to go to for their daily needs. Um they, these can also have residential uses, possibly uh senior housing. And these can be in a vertical or horizontal format. Um these would also have areas, public services, uh plaza and courtyards uh space that is accessible to the public. And these are generally located near schools and are connected to the adjoining neighborhoods with pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Um the village centers are smaller and more walkable than multi-use centers uh which are, which have similar uses but at higher intensity. Uh and the designation for village centers um on a map are, is, is implemented with the mixed-use one, mixed-use two, or the neighborhood center uh designation uh when it's standalone commercial. And then the multi-use nodes have um, have additional uh land use designations that apply. These images show what these uh village centers might look like, um mixed use, uh mixed uses either in a horizontal or vertical format. The buildings on the right uh show what that might uh, uh might be designed as. And then the two photographs on the left uh really show the kind of uh community these are intended to create, uh places for people to gather uh and for neighborhood, uh neighbors to be able to uh come to a place where they can uh not only conduct their daily shopping activities but also place to hang out and uh enjoy each other. Um there are twelve village centers and five locations for multi-use uh nodes that are proposed. Um and these are shown on this map. Um I won't go through each one of these, but the goal is to create complete neighborhoods across the city. So they're, 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 as you can see, spread out across the city so that you can, each one of the, is, is within a walking or biking distance um easily accessible for, for residents. Uh some of these are um recommended for the future when additional residential is built. Uh so these would be built after or in conjunction with residential development if it doesn't already exist. Um this example shows a site plan of how such a center might be designed. It contains elements of both standalone residential uses with these townhomes in the back, um commercial uses along the front with areas for uh, uh for gathering spaces and then some um vertical mixed-use with residential below and residential uh above. With commercials below and residential above. Uh moving on to the health and wellness districts, uh there are two districts um that are proposed um on this map. As you can see, the one around the regional medical center, it's about hundred and eighty acres in size. Um and the second one around Kaiser is smaller, about twenty acres, but just under that. And these districts are intended to encourage medical offices, medical facilities, and support facilities in a campus-like setting. Um in the, in the one around the regional medical center, we could also see some um R and D type uses that could be located here uh and then supportive retail is also permitted. Um this site plan again um is in, is an example of how a portion of the district might develop. Um and this is looking at, and uh it's adjacent to the uh regional medical center, which is just down here. Uh and it shows medical uh offices, reso- or research facilities, some plaza space. Um and one could also imagine seeing uh some vocational training that's included in, in some of these structures and which could be medically related. Um this has, there has been a lot of discussion about education and the desire to see more uh higher education uh uses in Palmdale. And um with that in mind, um we have uh the, the alternatives we have presented before of proposed various locations for, for these districts. And the two locations that were included in the preferred alternative are one near the Palmdale High School A V College location, as this is twenty, uh Twenty-Fifth Street East. And this is Palmdale Boulevard, so the location is shown in the bright blue here. And then the so- the second location is uh further to the east, adjacent to the Aerospace Academy. The thinking here was that there was some synergy that could be built with these existing educational uses. So with the, with the western district, we have Palmdale High School and then we have the extension for AV College, which is located in the shopping center to the north of Palmdale Boulevard, and by, with these two as anchor uses, we can imagine that there could be a cluster of other satellite campuses or additional vocational training facilities or potentially even a smaller annex for expansion of one of these existing uses. Could also expect to see some trade schools as well. So there has been a lot of discussion about these, and later on in the presentation, I'll go over what some of the recommended changes for the educational districts are. This example again shows how such a district might develop campus-style buildings around a courtyard or a quad, so to speak, with educational uses around some residential uses as well as maintaining the commercial frontage along Palmdale Boulevard on both, on both sides of the street. And again, in a campus-type setting with public plazas or gathering spaces as well as spaces for collaboration and education. I'll pause again here for any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, yes.
So. Hi, going back to the village centers and specifically the pedestrian and bicycle networks. So I'm a big fan of jumping on my bicycle with my wife, on her bicycle, and driving to one of these places safely, and parking my bike, and walking around and having a coffee and a sandwich and whatnot. And what I'm worried about, and I see this every day in the Danilo Valley press, literally every day, we're watching, we're hearing pedestrians getting killed by motorists, and I truly believe that it's distracted driving more than anything else. And I've been to a lot of places that have done what we're talking about doing here, and these bike paths, bike lanes, pedestrian lanes are way away from cars. I would, I would love to see that. I think that would encourage a lot more people to, which is great, because then it alleviates parking problems, you know, when people are just riding bikes. And I'd love to see our community become a real bike community, but it has to be user-friendly and it has to be safe. So I'm hoping that some of that's going to be incorporated into some of these plans.
Absolutely, Commissioner, you're right on. You know, we have all heard from a lot that Angelo Valley is not bicycle-friendly, and so why plan for more bikes? And I think it's a chicken and an egg situation, right? If you, if folks don't feel safe being able to use their bikes, then you won't see, you won't see the usage you would expect to see. The weather here in Southern California is pretty darn good most, most of the year round, so I think it's much more of a bicycle-friendly climate that we live in, and you can see, and so I think the bike usage, bicycle usage can certainly increase if there are safe facilities that are provided. And as a part of the general plan, we are looking at creating a bike network that is safe and allows for more connectivity, one, and second, in a safe environment, but also ensuring that traffic can still flow without causing limitations to that aspect of circulation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So the next few slides overview the feedback we received from the G-PAC, the stakeholders and the community. And just start off by giving you a few highlights of all the engagement that was conducted around the preferred alternative. Besides three G-PAC meetings, we also had a virtual workshop that was attended by almost ninety participants and around seventy views on the project YouTube channel. This was pretty well attended. We also had a simultaneous survey that was open for over four, five weeks, and it garnered over about a thousand views, and there were two hundred completed responses just on the survey. We have also conducted three focus group meetings with industry leaders, educational entities, faith-based organizations, as well as community-based organizations. We reached out to the Palmdale community extensively, both in print and in, through online methods. Print methods included press releases in both English and Spanish, print ads in Palmdale Connections, El Sol Magazine, and AV Smart Buy. And postcards, posters, and flyers were also distributed broadly across the city. Online engagement included numerous social media posts, digital geo-targeting, Spanish radio interviews and ads, electronic billboard ads, Palmdale Minute videos, and council announcements. And now switching over to what we actually heard. We had a great discussion with the G-PAC who provided excellent feedback, including the items listed here. We had a very robust discussion about the, both the location of the health and wellness districts, as well as their suggestion to allow senior living facilities in these districts. They also asked to see more village centers, specifically on the eastern side of Palmdale, and the map reflects that. And then the education district, again, as I said, there has been a lot of discussion around these locations, and there was, there were very, there were quite a few members on the G-PAC who wanted a larger area set aside for, with enough land for a four-year campus somewhere in Palmdale, and that's input that I'll describe a little bit more later on. In terms of what we heard from the community, we have the summarized here through the survey results. Overall, almost seventy percent either strongly agreed or agreed with the land, the preferred land use alternative. Most, some of the comments that were included noted that they appreciated the flexibility it offered in terms of the land uses that were permitted, and they were hopeful for the future of Palmdale, and they also hope that this would help eliminate inequities and division across the city. More specifically, for the village centers, seventy-three percent agreed or strongly agreed about where these were located, and eighty-two percent agreed or strongly agreed about the uses that were recommended for the village centers. There was some in the comments we received, open-ended responses we received, there was still some discussion whether village centers should be only commercial, but others then wanted to see, all of them have mixed uses, so there was, there was a slight divergence of opinion with regard to that. With regard to the health and wellness districts, again, overwhelmingly seventy-six percent agreed with the locations, and eighty-five percent agreed with the uses that were being proposed. The comments we heard was to have additional space on the east side for a hospital facility, and that's being addressed with the enlargement of Kaiser, of the health and wellness district around Kaiser, which I'll show you in a map in just a moment. And then with regard to the education district, sixty-seven percent agreed or strongly agreed with the locations, and eighty-two percent agreed with the uses that were proposed. There was some feedback about the need or the desire to see a education district on the west side, and that's also been addressed that I will, I'm describing in just a moment. But I'll pause for any questions you might have about the engagement and the feedback we got. So during the public review of the land use, preferred land use alternative, we received several specific comments from G-PAC members, community members, property owners, and stakeholders, and these are briefly described here. These included expanding the health and wellness district on the, on the Avenue S, Forty-Seven Street location, expanding the allowed uses to include senior housing and educational and vocational training facilities. For the education district, consider adding another location for it on a large, additional area, and for village centers to designate either, to be, to be more specific about what each of the village centers might be, if they should be just commercial, or if they should be mixed use. So the designations that are being proposed for each of the village centers varies based on location. We were also asked to show where the locations for parks and open spaces might be, and we haven't shown those on the general plan since we, we can't show park space privately on property, but as we continue to work through the general plan, we will have maps included which show general location, locations for parks that are adjacent to where the need is and where, where the future population is intended to be. And then we also heard, got several comments related to the Plant Forty Two and the desire to limit incompatible uses adjacent to it. So here in a little bit more detail, the map on the lower, the lower map shows the locate, the size of the health and wellness district where Kaiser is today, Avenue Forty-Seven and Avenue, Forty-Seven Street East and Avenue S. And we have, based on the input, we are recommending expanding that this district to be, be much larger, about three times as large, and to also allow senior housing, assisted living, and supportive care uses, as well as educational and vocational training facilities. With regard to the education district, several G-PAC members suggested that the preferred land use alternative should consider reserving land for a large four-year college campus instead of or in addition to the two proposed education districts. And as you can see, this is the smaller of the two existing, this is Aerospace Academy, and this district in the bright blue here, which was adjacent to it, is now being proposed to move further eastward to a larger site about, almost three times as big again, to be designated as the education district instead. So we would have one at Twenty-Fifth Street East and Palmdale Boulevard, and the second larger one at Forty-Seven Street East and Palmdale Boulevard. So we, we have made that, we are recommending making that change, and with that change, there are needed to be additional modifications to the frontage of Palmdale Boulevard, so those are also shown on the map here. And finally, we would allow education-related uses in the health and wellness districts as well, to allow for vocational training-type uses in the PRNC district. And then around Plant Forty Two, several property owners and aerospace industries presented as requested limiting, incompatible uses within the accident potential zone of Plant Forty Two, and our team is recommending further limiting residential uses within those. And the changes here are shown here. This area down here falls within the, within APZ and is now proposed to be a mix of industrial and employment flex uses. And I'll stop again here for any questions you might have. And then I just wanted to give you a little bit preview of what's to come. In the overall schedule, we will be presenting the same information to the city council next week to get their input, and then following that, we will begin the technical studies needed, the traffic study for the EIR, and the other associated technical work that needs to be done. We are continuing the policy development work with the G-PAC and our team, and then we expect to have a public draft of the general plan available in, in the fall of this year with adoption in the early part of next year. And that concludes my presentation. I can stop sharing, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. That, that's a lot of work, I know. In looking through the presentation beforehand, it was good to see the incorporation of some of the suggestions and ideas that people had put in, so. And doing this during COVID had to, like, add a whole nother layer of craze to it, but good job, everybody. I'm impressed with it. I'm looking forward to some of those changes and having you get through this.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see anything addressed as far as Sierra and Avenue S. You guys changed that from a village center to a multi-use node? What type of businesses are we hoping to attract right there? Because there is nothing in the area but storage right now.
I'll show my map, my screen again so you can see. So you're referring to Avenue S and Sierra?
Correct.
It is not, there are no businesses there that would fall in a, in a multi-use node scale, but the, there is land around that intersection that has the potential of incorporating some higher intensive uses, commercial uses, given its location close to Highway fourteen and Avenue S being a major east-west corridor.
So we're not addressing any shopping centers or anything for that area because there is absolutely nothing right there?
It, it, it could accommodate shopping as well. The multi-use nodes are essentially like village centers, but they have a little bit more intensity, and they can also have some of the other type of uses that we've talked about. So as you can see on the map, the Avenue S and Forty-Seven intersection is shown as a multi-use node, and that has the medical focus. The medical uses of it, the Kaiser facility and the potential expansion of the, of the medical district around it.
Yeah, I understand. Right. Yeah, I understand what, right. But I'm just saying as far as accessible for any of the residents in the area right now, period.
Um, so the Avenue S and Sierra Highway is a good location for providing those, uh, type of neighborhood commercial uses so the neighboring, uh, residents can, uh, can access those more easily and not be so auto-dependent.
So it gives you more of a variety of what you can bring into that area versus the village, right? Okay, great. Any other questions?
I just have one question. Yeah, this is, uh, Commissioner Smith. I just have one question. You may have addressed it, or maybe it's incorporated in a number of things that you talked about with the mixed use. Has there been any discussion regarding building a youth facility or at least, uh, setting aside an area in Palmdale where there would be focused only, uh, uh, youth activities?
Um, um, Commissioner said that's a really good question and yes, we've heard, uh, a lot from residents about, uh, the desire to see a youth facility somewhere in Palmdale. Um, the general plan itself doesn't really propose construction of any such use. It, it just allows, uh, creates designations that allow those type of uses. And, um, youth facilities can be located in, um, any of the designations in, in the village centers, uh, where the village centers are being located. They can be located in some of the public designations that are on the, um, that are on the map and then of course, um, in, in and around, um, the designations, um, for schools as well as, uh, as parks and other community facilities.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's what I figured. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments or suggestions from the Commission regarding the preferred land use alternative? Okay.
No recommendation or anything. I just want to commend you guys on an awesome job. You did a great presentation and I see that there's a lot of work that was put in here and so I commend people on G-PAC and presenting it tonight and looking forward to hearing responses from the City Council next week, so. Good luck on that and great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Simon. All right, then that will conclude that portion and bring us to item ten on our agenda. Ms. Saxton sitting in for Ms. Taggart.
Yes, um, thank you. I just want to add on, uh, to all, um, everything that was just said and thank the planning commissioners as well as our G-PAC and staff. Uh, we have a couple of them on right now. Megan has been heavily involved in the general plan, but also Ben Sis, um, one of our planners, Ruben, part of the traffic team. Really, this has been a very collaborative effort and like all of you noticed, a lot of work. So, uh, we're really excited to actually be at this phase and we too hope that next week goes well and that the City Council feels like we've listened to the community and are decision-makers as well. So thanks for listening to that and, uh, asking questions and providing that information. Um, just a reminder, we will be at City Council next week, so members of the community, um, if you'd like to engage in that way, it is on the sixteenth, next Tuesday, at the regularly scheduled City Council Workshop time, seven P.M. We also at that time will bring the Annual Housing Element Report update to our City Council as an information item. Every year we have to submit that to HCD and that essentially just states the number of certificates of occupancy that we have, um, issued as a city and that goes towards our Regional Housing Needs Assessment, allocation and our commitment or what the state says that we need to plan for. So actually interesting, I, this isn't gonna be in front of Planning Commission, so I'll just share with all of you that, uh, last year, 2020, the weirdest year of all time, um, we actually issued two hundred and thirty-three certificates of occupancy and that is the most we've had in many years. So while things are a little strange socially, uh, our construction industry and our housing industry is really booming and we're very excited to continue to fill those needs for our community and provide the housing to the employers that really want to get people up here. So we're excited to be able to report that. Um, I also wanted to mention to our community that there are a lot of COVID vaccine sites available and the city website has all those locations. There's actually a lot of pharmacies and different random locations like CVS and Vons that have them available. Obviously, the appointments get filled up pretty quick, but some people don't know that there's a lot of sites out here in the Antelope Valley that are providing that option. Um, and I just want to say thank you to Planning Commission. It's so fun to be with you all again and be able to talk. And that's it.
All right, thank you so much. All right, item eleven on our agenda, Planning Commission Communications. Do any of the commissioners have anything to share, comment? Um, okay, I would like to say that I do know the city is forming the Measure A-Z Oversight Committee and they are also forming a new Public Arts Commission. Um, so if you are interested in serving on either of those, the applications are on the city's website if you click on the "How Do I Apply"? Um, and interestingly, the Public Arts Commission is designated for seven people, one of whom is a planning commissioner. So at least one of us has to apply for that. So if you're interested in that, in public art, um, then be sure to get your application in by the twenty-fifth. Both of those application, uh, windows close on the twenty-fifth. And on a side note, I think we're very honored, um, as much as we miss Ms. Taggart. I want to say thank you very much, Carleen, for being here for us and I'm gonna share your secret, that it's your birthday? And so thank you extra, extra for being here on your birthday, because that's.
Happy birthday!
Thank you.
So.
Wouldn't want to be anywhere else.
Sure. You planning nerds. All right, well with that then, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here. Thank all of our, uh, attendees today. And I will adjourn this meeting to our next meeting on Thursday, April eighth, at seven P.M. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.